Thank you very much. Kathleen, how about a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Seifert?
Here.
And Chair Dickerson?
Here. Thank you very much. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the April 6th Planning Commission minutes? And if anybody has any thing they want to change or discuss about it, they should bring it up, otherwise I'm going to need a motion.
I move that we have the Planning Commission meetings of April 6th.
Kathleen?
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business, each member of the audience, and each subject is limited discussion of three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. These are for things that are not on the agenda. So if anybody has anything they want to discuss that is not on the agenda, then they would come forward for public comment. I think Frank also has something to say about folks out in Zoom land, so.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission.
Excuse me, Frank. I made a mistake. Commissioner Hernandez just pointed out, I believe I was absent for that meeting.
Okay, so you can either abstain or you can say that you looked it over and...
I'll just abstain. Thank you.
An abstention.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. I would first off like to announce to the persons in person here at the meeting tonight and also those watching via YouTube and also Zoom that pursuant to AB 361 and adopted Santa Maria City Council resolutions, this planning commission is being conducted by using a combination of virtual and in-person technologies, in other words, a hybrid meeting. And we're doing this to promote social distancing and facilitate continuity of our government and public hearings. And in terms of those who are watching the meeting and would like to participate in the meeting via Zoom, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, please use the raise hand icon, which is located at the bottom of your screen, to alert the staff that you'd like to comment on a particular item or a particular topic. If you're calling in from a cellphone and watching Zoom and wish to make a comment, please dial *9, which again will alert the staff that you wish to make a comment. All of those wishing to make a comment will be recognized in the order of hands received. You will be unmuted when and called upon, at which point you may state your name and then proceed with your comments on the business at hand. As with those attending in person, the maximum comment time will be limited to three minutes for comments. That concludes staff's comments on the meeting.
Thank you for your comments on comments. Are there any people out there that wish to, Frank, that wish to comment on things not on the agenda?
So again, I'd like to reiterate, if there are anyone in attendance who would like to make general comments about items not on the agenda, this would be the time you would want to raise your hand. I'll wait a few moments. Seeing none, Commissioner, Chair, and the members of the commission, there are no speakers in attendance via Zoom wishing to make a comment.
Excellent. Then away we go. Item number one. Park Edge Mixed Use Plan Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit at 2770 Santa Maria Way?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to recommend that the commission continue this item. We have received only today a letter asserting new and unreviewed impacts, environmental impacts regarding this project. This letter was submitted by the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. It was submitted through an attorney who submitted it on that carpenters' group behalf. And for that reason, because we need additional time to analyze these comments and these assertions about the project causing additional and new environmental impacts, we would like to, as I said, recommend that the commission continue this item. These were environmental issues that were not previously raised. We would like to recommend that the commission continue it to a date certain. So we would suggest, after speaking with the applicant, the June 15th, 2022 meeting. And in continuance of this conversation, the city attorney would also like to make some comments.
Heather, what do you have?
Thank you for the motion. Heather Woodham, Assistant City Attorney. Yes, we are requesting that the commission continue this item. The new letter that was received today, while the first 10 pages are virtually identical to a previous letter that was submitted by Mr. Say, the subsequent 10 pages do raise new environmental concerns that have not been raised to the city before, particularly in regard to greenhouse gas impacts. We discussed the letter with our, the environmental consultant, who prepared the mitigated negative declaration, and the consultant concurred that the additional comments do warrant an analysis. They were not previously looked at and a written response, which could not be done in such short notice. Again, we received the letter today. So we are requesting the continuance so that staff can have the opportunity to review the additional information and provide, see what, whether it warrants any additional analysis and prepare a written response for those items, which is something that we have done previously when environmental issues are raised. And the importance of doing this is for the record. If this hearing is challenged, if the project is challenged, the court will be looking to the record to determine whether a proper environmental analysis was performed. And if we don't have responses in that record, there will be no responses on the city's behalf to explain why you made your decision, what your decision was based on. So in order for you to be fully informed of all environmental issues and to properly review this matter and make an opinion on it, we would request an opportunity to continue it. And it looks like Mr. Albro is requesting a date certain of June 15th. We, I know the applicant would like to be heard on this, and we may have members of the public who would like to speak on this. At this time, we would request that the discussion be focused on whether or not to continue it, to continue it, because if the matter is continued, then there'll be a public hearing in the future where anyone who wants to speak on the item will have plenty of opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just as a question on, on who goes first, second, as far as the, the agenda goes, would we, would we have the applicant give, give what they want to say first, or do we want to have the public say what they're first and then, and then have the applicant say?
I think we should stay as close to our normal procedure, which normally would be that staff would present the, the project. They will not be doing that. After that, we typically go to the applicant for them to present their side, or to present their project.
Okay.
In this instance, I would recommend we go to the applicant, let them speak on staff's request for the continuance, then we'll hear from the public, and then you all can take your action.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any questions by commissioners for staff in this matter?
Yeah, Chair, I do have a question on, Frank, the June 15th, is that just the next available, soonest available date, or? Chair, members of the commission, no. There, we are going to have meetings, or at least one meeting scheduled before that date. However, a response could not be prepared for the soonest meeting, the most, the closest coming up. And the applicant team, the whole applicant team was not available for the June 1st meeting. So that's why we're looking at the June, June 15th meeting date. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions now? Why don't we go ahead and hear from the, I'm assuming that we have no presentation from staff?
No, no presentation from staff. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and hear from the applicant? Brian, state your name and address, please.
Brian Schwartz, Superplanning Concepts, 2624 Santa Barbara, Santa Maria. We, as you can see, we have our team here. They're fully prepared to make a presentation tonight. And I do want to state that this team that they hire here is all local. The landscape architect, Bethel Engineering, RRM, UPC, these are local people. And I say that because the letter that the carpenters' union alludes, talks about is, they talk about needing to hire local people. They need to reduce greenhouse gases and hire local people. Dynamic Development has hired local teams. They've done multiple projects in the city. They invest in the city, and they will continue to hire local people. So I just wanted to start with that. I think everybody can see what's going on here with what's, with the submitted letters. There was a 280-page letter that was submitted on, earlier in the year. And the majority of it is all, I'm going to say, air quality analysis printouts and other kind of supplemental information. The first 20 pages brings up some, some SEQA issues, and the response to comment from Rincon was that there is no substantial evidence, there is no reasonable or fair argument, and that the environmental document is completely adequate. There is no basis for an ERR to be done. So what we have here again is essentially a very, very similar letter raising a few different additional points in order to delay this project. And, you know, I think really the question is, is are we going to embolden this type of behavior to manipulate the process under this guise of environmental protection only to bolster their employment numbers? That's what this is really about, and I think we all know that. And it's very disheartening to see it, because all it does is it, it's essentially bullying the city. It's bullying the applicants into some sort of agreement with them, and it has nothing to do with the environment. So, you know, I think that's a, tonight is a question of how you want to proceed with these, these manipulations of the process, because what's going to happen the next time? We're going to come to June 14th or get put in a 15th, the day of, they're going to put in another slightly different letter? And then we start the process all over again? This, they have, the city has a process for this. This is the appeals process. This project has been fully vetted by the city staff. It's supported by city staff. It's gone through two study sessions. We are here tonight. We've made the changes at the study sessions that have been requested. We would like to present this project to you and, and move this process forward. If these, if the opponents want to sue this project, they are going to, regardless of your decision tonight. So we, we ask that, we have the opportunity, and you have the opportunity to hear this project tonight and move it forward, knowing that this environmental document is sound and that they are going to proceed as they will with it, with a legal challenge or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Any questions for the applicant at this time?
Um, yes, I do have a question. Being Commissioner Blanco brought this up, couldn't we get the presentation sooner in May if it is already vetted? If it's already been vetted, the city has done what it's supposed to do in the environmental aspect. Shouldn't we be ready in May?
Our conversations, again, all of this was happening just today. Our conversations this afternoon with our environmental consultant that produced the city's SEQA document review of the applicant's project, their opinion was that a written response was necessary and that to prepare an adequate written response in the, from the limited time they've had to review this letter and make a quick response to city staff, and including the time we would need to prepare for the meeting, there's lead time to prepare for each meeting, they doubted whether they would be able to complete the, the analysis of this new information in the, in the time allotted to make that next hearing, to make the May 18th hearing. They, they said it was not going to be possible. We proposed the June 1st hearing date, and if the applicant is still up for the June 1st hearing date, that's fine with us. The applicant commuted part of the team would not be available, so that's why I offered up the June 15th. But May 18th is simply not possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further, further questions? No? No. Thank you very much, Brian. Let's go ahead and open this up to public comment. We obviously had some written communications. We're all discussing that. So how about anything from the public, either here or in the Zoom? Is anybody raising their hands?
I do have so far two attendees raising their hands. If we would, if there are no public comment for attendees, we can go forward. First is Pedro Toscano.
Okay. Mr. Toscano, you will have three minutes. If you can state your name and address for the record, please. Mr. Toscano?
Mr. Toscano?
Oh, can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Mr. Toscano, if you could state your name and your address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Toscano.
Yes.
Maybe he has himself on mute. Well, I guess he can't hear us. Yeah. Let's go ahead and move on to the next person, and then we can come back to Mr. Toscano and see if he's worked it up after that.
So the next individual we have, I'm sorry, Mr. Toscano, you're not coming through on our audio. The next person we have is James Bissin, and I will allow you to speak at this point.
Mr. Bissin, can you hear us? Mr. Bissin, can you hear us? Mr. Bissin?
I'm having a little difficulty with the Zoom here. Hold on just a moment.
This says he's not, allowed to talk is not available because Mr. Bissin is using an older version of Zoom. Choose Promote to Panelist to allow him to talk. Do you have that notice?
I do not, but I can attempt that.
I just did that.
Okay.
Is that done? Okay. Mr. Bissin, can you hear us now?
You're muted.
Mr. Bissin, you do have to... You do have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bissin, if you can state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
I'm James Bissin, 2710 Santa Barbara Drive.
Okay. Kathleen, are we able to turn that down some way? Hold on just one more second, Mr. Bissin. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, you got my address?
We did. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I support the projects. I have no environmental concerns. My only question is, and I apologize for missing the study sessions, so I'm a homeowner adjacent to the park on Santa Barbara. My question is, for the proposed apartment complex, in the commission's view, is the parking for the apartments adequate as planned? Because I don't think, I can't speak for any of my neighbors, but I don't think any of them would be excited about our street being utilized for overflow parking for the apartments.
Frank, do you want to address that?
Certainly. Mr. Bissin, I'm going to go ahead and mute you again, and, but thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
So I will say that there has been both traffic studies and parking analysis done for the project. The project meets and exceeds the minimum standards. The commercial project is fully parked, and the residential project exceeds the minimum standards for the mixed use ordinance and as well for the density bonus, state law parking requirements, which are slightly different than the city's requirements, but it exceeds both those parking requirements.
Thank you very much. Is there someone other than Mr. Toscano still out there?
Yes, commission members, we have Manley McNinch.
Okay.
And I'm attempting to allow him to speak. Mr. McNinch, you may go ahead and make your comments. First of all, state your name and address.
And you'll have three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Manley McNinch, I live on Bradley Road in Santa Maria, California. I know I will be environmentally impacted by this project. It's going to add to the traffic pollution. It's going to add to air pollution with all the additional cars and traffic coming into that area. Right across the street from there, there's already an apartment complex going up. DMV is going to be going into that area, right on, almost on the same lot, same general area as that lot. There's going to be a drive, drive-through restaurant in there. That's going to really increase the traffic and congestion in that area. All that does generate more greenhouse gas, and it does generate congestion and environmental concerns. Also, with parking, at current rate, it's, everything's figured in, and it's, you know, it's figured pretty well for right now, but the people that are going to be moving into these apartments to afford them are going to be living two and three families in those units, just like they do on Bradley Road right next to my house now. They, they had everything planned out, good for the parking, but they didn't plan for the fact that it takes two to three families in this town with the money they earn to rent a place here. So unless you're going to figure for three families moving in there, you're not going to handle the traffic and parking. I appreciate your time and concerns. I really wish this project would be done a little more friendly to the area, and I commend you for hiring, what, eight, nine people, maybe something like that, for, you know, local. How about we get the workforce local as well? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Frank, is there additional?
Commissioners, Chair, yes, we have Anthony Ventura.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Anthony Ventura. I am a member of Local 805. My family lives in this area, with my mom living off of 705 Rayner Way.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Ventura.
Are you there?
Yes.
Okay. So my, my mom lives in the vicinity off of Rayner Way. I have two nieces that live just down the street from this project. I do believe my family's going to be impacted by it, with my great nephews and nieces also that live in that area. I know that the gentleman had said that he's, he's got some people that are working locally. Yeah, he may have a few that are working locally, but most of these contractors are going to come in. They're going to bring an outside workforce. They're going to come in, they're going to work for really low wages. These same people who actually build this project will never be able to rent it, at least not one family. I believe that the city should have some kind of clause that kicks in that says that they utilize local, local workforce here locally, and the money stays here locally, so it was, it's stimulating economy locally here in Santa Maria. We all know that Santa Maria was hit pretty hard, and it has a disproportionate lower income community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Commissioner, we have one additional person online, Jonathan Duran.
Mr. Duran?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Duran. I'm also a Local 805 carpenter, and I am a representative with the Southwest Regional Council Carpenters. I reside in Ventura County, but I represent members that live in Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo County. Those members that do live in the vicinity of that project will be affected by the environmental impact of this project. One of the things I also want to touch on is also just having the aspect of having some type of skilled and trained workforce understanding with this project, utilizing our accredited apprenticeship program and allowing students that are graduating from the schools within the area to be able to work on projects like this, and to be able to work close to home and be able to afford these apartments with good jobs, wages, and benefits, and be able to provide for their families. Again, like I said, with the gentleman that spoke from the applicant, yes, we understand that you have local individuals that do work on these projects, but the majority of the workforce does come from outside the area, does bring in their people, and then the money leaves the area without having the rippling effect of having people work and the money stay in the area. Thank you so much for my, for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just would like to state for anybody else who might be listening that the staff has requested that the commission continue this item to a date certain. If the item's continued, we will open a public hearing, and everyone will have a chance to be heard. So while you do have your three minutes to speak, it's best to focus on any comments you have about the continuance, because if the item is continued, you will have a full opportunity then to get your comments into the record.
Thank you very much.
Chair, we do have one additional person. I believe this may be the person that was unable to speak at the beginning.
Mr. Toscano?
Actually, no, this is Alex Perez.
Oh, all right.
Mr. Perez, go ahead.
Mr. Perez, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Alex Perez, and my address is 1225 Mariposa Drive, but I represent right around 600 or 700 members in this county and area that are skilled tradesmen carpenters. And most of these members travel, you know, pretty far to work, you know, I would say about 100 miles a day. So we, as, as, as a, as a whole, we will all be affected by, you know, vehicle miles traveled and emissions and all that, and miles on your vehicles. But anyway, this, this project should require local hire and skilled and trained workforce with the accredited apprenticeship program. There's no reason why they should only have eight people that are supposedly working locally if this is going to take between 100 and to 120 people to build, as far as tradesmen. So you guys should strongly consider adding local hire and skilled and trained apprenticeship. So you guys should strongly consider adding local hire and skilled and trained apprenticeship program into this development. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Is there anybody else, Frank?
Chair, no, there is no, no additional folks with their hands raised.
Is Mr. Toscano still out there?
You know, I don't see him on the list any longer. He may have disconnected.
Okay. What do we have, feedback there or is the last gentleman still on somehow?
I, I think the last gentleman was just putting his mute on, so we're good now.
Okay. Okay, that's it for public comment. Do we have the applicant make, address those or do we at this point not?
No, this is not a public hearing. Staff has asked for a continuance.
Thank you.
It's up to the commission whether you'd like to grant that.
Okay. I will then bring it back to the commission for any questions or comments or motions. Yes.
Thank you, Chair. So Heather, this last-minute tactic, sending a letter, 282 pages, that no one has a chance to read or review. So Mr. Schwartz brought up a very good point. What's, what is our process here? Is there a deadline that people can, can do this, that we can have time so that we can still continue on time, have our hearings on time and move along as we are scheduled? Or is this going to be a continuing item where someone brings in a letter, we have to stop everything and then respond to the letter? Do we have anything in place to alleviate this situation?
I wouldn't say there's something in place to alleviate the situation, nothing specific I can point you to or reference you to. I agree that it is frustrating to receive a letter the day of the hearing. It puts the city in a very difficult position because we don't have time to analyze it and to respond to the items raised. I agree it's frustrating. In this instance, we believe that new issues have been raised, which we want to address because if we don't address them, they will not be in the record. And as far as, well, what happens when they do it next time? Well, maybe next time it won't be reasonable. Maybe next time we can say, you know, I can't do a hypothetical without actually having it in front of me as far as analyzing what I would recommend in that situation, but at some point, no, it becomes unreasonable and at some point we say, no, we've done a thorough analysis and, and, and we go ahead and we proceed. You know, what triggers that, when that happens, I don't know. This is the first public hearing on the item. The city attorney's office's position is that we would like the opportunity to build a solid record. So if this is in fact challenged, we'll have a solid record and we hopefully would be able to prevail on any challenge. We think it's very prudent to dot all our i's, cross all our t's, build a good record rather than to push it through. I don't see any reason not to proceed when you have full knowledge and all the information that you need to make your decision.
Thank you. I, I don't remember getting this letter when they were building their hall. So it's just very frustrating that not all the rules apply to everyone. Thank you.
Further questions of staff this time? Mayor Bill?
I agree with Commissioner Seifert. I think this is a stall tactic. I think our, we have faith in our consultant. I think our consultant did a thorough job, otherwise we wouldn't, the city wouldn't have hired them. So I think we have all the information, we need to move forward. However, if other commissioners feel that we need a continuance, I'm not opposed to it.
Commissioner?
Well, I'll just, I guess add to that, it seems like it's real, you know, frustrating and I'm sure it's frustrating for the applicant and the team and everybody that's put in a lot of work. You know, I, I guess it's surprising to me a little bit that, that there's not a cutoff date that's well ahead of today to be able to submit a letter like this. So, you know, I'm outside my realm in terms of legal evaluation, so I, I got to defer to our experts, but it definitely is frustrating. I can sympathize with, with the applicant and, and staff and everybody else that was prepared, so it's unfortunate.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lopez, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I fully agree with the rest of the commissioners. I like to hear it. I know everybody's here and ready, but I know our city attorney is, is, has said why we should hold off and I can agree with that, but it is very frustrating. And I could, Mr. Schwartz had, had very good words to say and I appreciate that, Brian. Thank you, and that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I agree with the other commissioners as well and I agree with the commissioner, or Mr. Schwartz. I, I also believe this is a delaying tactic. That being said, a one-time good faith by the opponents where they did bring up some things that the, that the city attorney would like to address, okay, I'm willing to give it to them this time, but, but the next time, probably at some point, we need to start looking at it as being unreasonable and, and then we, the applicants do need to be able to move forward if that's the druthers of this, of this commission. So that being said, I would need a motion to continue if we're to do so.
I move they will continue Park Edge mixed-use plan development permit and conditional use permit at 2270 Santa Maria Way to, did the applicant want June 1st or June 15th?
Is this a decision that has to be made right now if we, if we decide on the first and continue to the 15th and/or vice versa?
It's up to staff.
Chair members of the commission, if we continue it to the meeting on June 1st and for whatever reason it's decided or recommended at that meeting that it be continued again, we could continue it to a future, future date.
But we would have to continue it at the meeting versus it being continued prior?
Yes, it would have to be, if you're continuing it to the first, it would have to be an action to continue the item at, made at the meeting on the first.
So if we do it on the first and you guys aren't ready to go, then it would actually show up as an item that we would then have to vote on continuing to the 15th or we can just put it on the 15th?
The 15th, I think it is, unfortunately, we stopped on the team members that can't be here on the first.
Okay.
We understand.
So the motion is that we continue the item, conditional use permit at 2770 Santa Maria Way to June 15th, 2022.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Thank you very much and we'll see you June 15th. Certainly understand your frustration. Moving on to number two, oral reports from planning commission staff. Do we have any oral reports from the planning, or from the staff?
Chair members of the commission, I would just like to mention that we do have a study session tomorrow. The Carrying Hands Veterinary Clinic is going to be discussed at our study session. The May 4th hearing is canceled for a lack of items, as is the May 5th study session. So our next hearing, public hearing with the planning commission will be on May 18th. And currently we have one item scheduled, one item tentatively scheduled, and a third item regarding an update to planning commission rules and procedures scheduled for that May 18th hearing. Currently, we do show a tentative item on the 19th, but that will be confirmed at a later time.
Great, thank you very much. Anything else?
That concludes staff's comments.
Anything else from the commissioners? Oral reports?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I rented a storage unit.
I'm sorry.
I just, after all the hearings that we've had and all the comments that I made, I found myself at the door of the storage unit, ordering a storage unit the other day and I just thought I'd tell you all that.
Disclosed.
I, I now have a storage unit.
Welcome, welcome to a, welcome to a every six-month increase in your rent.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I just thought I'd share that with you because I figured you'd get a kick out of it.
Feel our pain.
I'm feeling.
Anything else? Let's call it a night. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I, since there's no way for me to attend digitally tomorrow, I will not be at the meeting.
I understand. Try to get well.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.